That everyone received the meeting notice and adopt the agenda. And if we could, I'll stand and pledge to the flag.
I thought the ladies and gentlemen of the United States of America and to the Republic of the Free State, our one nation, under God, in the name of the Lord Jesus Christ.
All right, we have two meetings actually tonight. The first meeting is the committee of the whole meeting where we can have audience participation. So if anyone has any comments during the time of the agenda, you're welcome to come up and talk about the item that's on the agenda. And after we adjourn from that meeting, then we'll be holding our regular business meeting. So we're going to start right now on reports. And 3A, we have the nature pod behavior incident report. Lowell, you want to start that one?
Well, actually, I assigned it to our high school principal. We did the research and so I'll let Jackie just say what she found.
I reviewed the discipline referrals and then basically that gave me an indication of any tickets that had been written. And there, in terms of official record, there haven't been any incidences that involve drugs or alcohol over the last two years. There were two tickets, or not two tickets, but two discipline records for students that were coming out of the nature pod. And we got a report of them, brought them in, and they had cigarettes or a lighter on them.
How do we monitor for the nature pods?
Well, in the morning, like when, you know, if we're coming in, if we get reports of students, if we get activity, if they're going across the street, if they're going the wrong direction. You know, we monitor kids as they're going outside, if they're underpassing, you know, then we are typically in route following them and that's how we get our information.
So the Greenfield police officer that's on duty doesn't actually walk the pod?
They do go in the nature pod. It's, have you been through it?
Hmm?
I mean, you know, it's, it's hard and, you know, there's a lot of noise and there's a lot of activity when you're in there. So I've actually been in, I have boots in my office that are for the nature pod. It is very difficult to, when you're actually in there, to locate someone.
You know, I've talked to a lot of, not a lot, a fair amount of parents. One particular parent that has had a child in the school district since early eighties or mid eighties, I believe, and other, and she, she walks regularly and she believes there's stuff going on there every day. I've talked to other parents that ride their bikes through there during the summer though and seem nothing actually. I talked to the assistant Greenfield police chief. And he said they have no reports. They do monitor it, but they don't actually walk through it either. And it's quite evident because when they did find the marijuana there, it was actually from off-duty Milwaukee police officer was playing ball with his kid out in the field and the ball went in there and he went in after it and found it.
But not on our property?
Right, I'm just saying in the area.
Sure.
And it wasn't, it had nothing to do with us. We got that clear.
Right.
So they don't actually go through the pod? Now, they, he says since the subdivision in the rear has cleared out a lot, they have a lot more viewing access to things. What really struck me was when Clayton Anderson came up here, who seems to be well-received by a lot of people in this room. And after having a conversation with his father about this, I started having a conversation with him, he still felt it was important enough to put in his presentation and then to expand on it when we ask questions.
I think that Clayton, I think what his goal is, is to take something that he has and how can we make it better?
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, I think that his presentation reflected that and that's what, you know, that's what he was hoping for and...
But when he, I mean, he, when he expanded on it in here when he asked some questions, he flat-out said, "Kids are coming back from drinking there." It's on tape.
Sometimes that's like urban legend, you know, and it grows bigger than it actually is. And maybe one of the students could comment on it.
I was going to say, we have two students with us tonight.
I'm Connor Dewey and I'm the president of students out of this year.
Michaela Noack and I'm the treasurer of our class.
And like, that is, okay, so I heard a lot about Clayton's presentation. It was obviously in the newspapers, a couple of newspapers, I saw the article. I feel like that was a little bit more when we were freshmen, you know, the classes that graduated a couple of years ago. And I don't think it's really as big of a problem now. I mean, occasionally you hear about people walking into the nature pod, but we did a cleanup project, actually, Senate did a cleanup project in there a year or two back. And what we found was a lot of beer cans and stuff from like the 1990s and like way back. There wasn't really much like recent stuff. But I mean, for, you know, if we're talking about like right now district. And we looked at the cans though and they had the dates on them.
Oh.
And it was like, wow, okay, well, maybe this isn't as severe of a problem as we thought it was.
Did you mean 1990 and further back than that or did you mean way back in the nature pod?
Like way back in the nature pod.
Okay.
I wasn't trying to say, but, um, no, and it wasn't, it wasn't as severe a problem as we kind of all thought it was going to be. And, you know, I mean, Ms. Winter is kind of right. I know Clayton, Clayton and I have been friends for a really long time and I know he's really excited about the frisbee golf course that he wants to put in there. So like I understand why he would say that, but I don't necessarily think that it's as severe of a problem as, you know, he might have put in his presentation or, you know, people have been reporting it is. I think it was a pretty severe problem, but I think the classes we have now are less so a problem with that stuff.
That's great to hear.
I think when we do get, you know, if teachers are concerned or if we have concerns, you know, that they will let us know. And even students will come in if they have a concern about another student. We have the resource officer there, we can administer the breathalyzer, so we have ways to, you know, check into things if, you know, we have concerns about use of any drugs. Or they can call their officers who are trying to identify those things, so...
Is there a policy about even entering during school time or before school time or after school time or on school days?
Well, other than seniors, they don't have any privilege to leave, so...
So there is not a policy for prior to school time? Thank you.
I just would make a comment. I don't want to blow that, this out of proportion, however, there is definitely a perception in the community that certain activities may be occurring there. I happened to be speaking with one of the neighbors who backs up to it and, and they were, you know, they thought that frisbee golf would, would be a good idea. And that was the first thing, it was like, oh, it'll be a lot better than what it's being used for. So the perception within the community is there, maybe putting something like this frisbee golf course would send a message that, you know, this is not what this is, you know, this is of course not what we intend this property to be used for. Maybe we can use it for, for something that is a positive.
Right, and I think that's the first thing.
And change the perception even within the community.
Any other questions, Chip, on us? All right, thank you. All right, moving on to 3B, chapter 220 contract and number of seats for the 2013-14 school year.
And Joel has been diligently working on figuring out the mysteries of chapter 220 and the contracts and the meetings and we decided to play it safe and traditional, but I'll let him explain that real quick. Joel, you got the sheet, you have the sheet in front of you. Basically, we're going to maintain what we have and the, we have three students graduating this year, so we'll maintain, I think we have 39 220 kids. So we'll, when those three move out, we're going to open up three seats for the coming school year and we have some classes with 20 and 21 in them and that's where we'll open the seats up. Good presentation, Joel.
My pleasure. So keep it simple.
Anyone have any questions on that? Questions, comments? All right. Free seat, 2013-14 calendar.
Tony has taken the lead on this. We put the, I'm prying the page down to the calendar. We, I believe, have the calendar in the fourth packet. And we started with the admins team, actually, it started with Kathy taking this year's and just moving it completely over into next year's calendar. And then we sat and played with it at the admin team level. Then we invited teachers to come over and look at different options. And then, so we had like an open meeting after school one night, took it to the personnel committee who made a few suggestions. But it was pretty much the same calendar that the teachers preferred, the one which is a little more expanded but had the breaks in it. So what you see in front of you is the calendar that seems to be the one preferred by everybody that had a chance to look at it. And then someone asked if, how compared to somewhere neighboring school districts and the end date for Greenfield, Tony, you remember when that was?
Greenfield ends on the 11th.
So it seems like we're in the ballpark for all of that as well.
The, I, I see the end date for elementary and middle school. I don't see it for high school. Is that the end of the fourth quarter, second semester and the third trimester?
Yeah. Yeah, it's June 11th is the last date for everybody, it's the half date. So it's the end of the fourth quarter, second semester.
And is it the half date for the high school also?
Correct.
Nope.
There's an exam schedule or they're off, they have three exams, one day to another, to another, and then the last day they all come back for, I think, the eighth day or...
And that's the 11th?
Exactly. The 11th, correct.
Good guess.
So when would graduation then be, the 8th?
Yes.
So seniors would be done on the 6th? Questions or comments on the calendar?
Would, at the high school level, there's just, Monday and Tuesday would be exam days then? Would there be exams at Friday the 6th as well?
We'd have three days, three days, so it'd be the Friday, Monday, Tuesday.
There are exams on the 6th and you know if they graduate on the 8th?
No, that would only...
You said exams early.
Earlier than that?
Seniors, we have that weekly. Any questions?
Comment period to parents and broadcast this to make sure we have an effective communication plan. What is it? The calendar? Yes. We can put it out, send a, send a, I, I do not, I mean, I try to keep the, and you're going to have a little presentation on that later in the communication, but the Infinity Campus messaging system, we can put out something that says the 13, or yeah, the 13-14 calendar is now on the website for parents to plan for next year, something like that. And then Kathy usually puts it up right under the announcements for a link or something, which makes it obvious. Kind of where we put the collaborative release stuff, she's working on, I don't, did you get that up already?
Yeah.
So parents are aware of what's going on with those dates and kind of just keep the communication flowing a little more freely.
And the school day hours have not changed from this year, correct?
No, there's, yeah, everything is the same.
Collaborative release days are the same as this year as well?
Right, and we're just going to do that ongoing monitoring with some, asking for additional input from parents on things that, if they'd like to see other offerings.
Anything else? Michaela, do you have any comments on the calendar? Connor, it doesn't matter to you. Hopefully it doesn't matter to you anyway. All right. Then let's move on to 3D, high school student representatives' report.
Oh, we're giving them a report?
So, well, usually you just... Want to tell us what's going on at high school, what things are, what are you doing?
Um, we're, we're working pretty hard. Through, I mean, through this week, I know I have a lot of tests and stuff this week. Teachers are trying to, I mean, push that in because we only got those two weeks until exams right after Christmas break, which is a little bit tough because I know a lot of teachers, like, once we get back, it takes like two or three days just to get our focus back after the break. But I mean, otherwise, yeah, things are running pretty smoothly. Do you have any...
Well, there's no problems at all, it's just tests, just usual, go through the day.
Next big project is...
Uh, Winterfell. I'm not really familiar. I mean, other than that, you know, we were talking about the nature pod earlier and I'd just like to say really quickly that, like, the students this year I've noticed at Whitnall are probably the least trouble-causing, I mean, that I've seen in a long, like, since I've been in the high school. And, you know, when I was in the middle school, we always got, heard these rumors about, you know, people causing trouble at the high school or whatever. And I really haven't seen any of it. I mean, even when we had our, you know, class period day during homecoming week, it was probably the most peaceful it's been since I've been at the high school. This year's been really smooth. I don't even know of any fights or anything that's broken out, which is usually at least one, so...
That's great.
Yeah, things are pretty relaxed this week, so...
And there's holiday concerts going on?
Yeah, this week.
Nice ones tomorrow night, orchestra and choir.
I was at the middle school and high school. Was it? Yeah, and you know, it's amazing to hear my daughter go, start at the lower grades going, "Do, do, do, do," you know, and now suddenly start leveling it off a little bit and, and a little more in-depth on the songs and then to hear the high, excuse me, but then to hear the high school kids that always played, it is such a huge step and your teacher should, and I emailed Mr. Roy and Mr. Noack and they do such a good job and you see the kids really, really react to it, really, you know, it, it's really good. And then, then they put together this two songs, one song at, at the end of the night that they don't even, they get together that night and it's, it's pretty cool, it really is. They do a good job.
So what sports are going on right now and how are the teams doing?
Uh, well, we've got the basketball teams and I, I think the girls team, I don't know if they've lost yet.
They're undefeated right now.
Yeah, undefeated. Boys' basketball team's not, not quite last year's team, but they're doing pretty well. Got a big game against the Berlin West tomorrow night and we decided that the theme was going to be green and white, which is the colors of Sandy Hook School, so the juniors and seniors are going to be green and the sophomores and freshmen are going to be white. So we thought that'd be kind of cool. And then Friday, the game is against Pius and that's on TV, so the theme's going to be just Whitnall, so...
So are the games at home this week or are they away?
At home, both are at home.
Both are at home?
The new sound system.
Actually, the new sound system is away, but...
The new sound system is away.
Is the student club something that would talk about? Something like Sandy Hook that, you know, about kids and, would you discuss that?
Well, I mean, like discuss it in terms of Senate and like whether we could donate or something?
No, how to prevent something, you know, because, and although this was a person outside the school, Calabine was a person from in the school. And if we saw tendencies or we saw kids that may have something like that, would they, would you think they would turn that in?
Uh, yeah, I definitely think that, I mean, obviously their first goal to administration or something, I would think that, you know, other students would be their first goal. I think if anybody saw anything or heard anything that was really, you know, over the line, then it would go straight to administration. But I think student senate, I mean, our goal is to kind of be somewhat inclusive, so, you know, we go out and do these student senate updates, tell everybody what we're doing and make sure, you know, everyone in the school feels at least a little included, even if they don't really want to be, and, you know, what's going on. And so, I mean, that's kind of what we do. And, you know, we, we're the ones who have the dances and all that kind of stuff and all these, you know, the blood drives, the fundraisers. And so, you know, I mean, I think that makes people feel pretty good about themselves when they participate. But other than that, I guess, yeah, Senate doesn't really do anything that could help prevent that to a full extent.
Michaela, do you feel safe in our schools?
Yeah, I do. I feel like, I mean, if there's a problem with anyone, you can go to anyone, like any teacher, if you're comfortable with someone. If you, there's, I don't really see a whole lot of bullying going around it. I feel people stand up for others as well.
Very good. Thank you. All right, now, if we could have a motion to adjourn the, the whole meeting, thank you, Rick. For a second?
Second.
Stephanie and all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? No. Okay, so I'm going to go right into the business meeting, so I'm going to call the business meeting to order, verify that everyone receives the meeting notice and adopt the agenda. And if there are comments from the audience, this would be the time to speak up. No comments from the audience? Are there comments from the audience? This would be the time to talk now? We're ju, well, we're just starting the business meeting and this is the time that you can speak about that.
Well, I actually just talked to Dr. Holt earlier today, so he reassured me that when I had just saw the minutes, I thought it was a one-time stipend and was a little concerned, but Dr. Holt assured me that it would be continuous throughout. And I just wanted to thank you, the board, for coming to this decision. And, you know, I appreciate it. My family appreciates it, so we're, we're, we're thanking you.
Thank you. All right, then moving on to the consent agenda, 3A, approval of November 26, 2012 school board meeting minutes, 3B, approval of 220 contract, 3C, approval of December vouchers and vouchers payable, 3D, approval of master's degree recognition, and 3E, approval of 2013-2014 calendar. Does anyone want to remove anything from the consent agenda?
Uh, C and D.
Anyone else? And can I have a motion to approve A, B, and E?
Follow.
Rick, thank you. For a second?
Second.
Bernie? And all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, then 3C, Quinn.
I, um, we have paid Marketing On Demand $1,800 and $1,800 for design and layout for the fall 2012 newsletter and another, and Facebook updates, and then another $200 to them for Facebook updates. It has been my experience with them that they are overpriced. Dr. Holt, if you remember, the first block party was saddled with a bunch of costs that we, we didn't know about at the time. And from what I saw of that person, that lady, didn't justify the amount. I'm a, I'm a, cheap by nature. I wonder that we don't have talent in this school to do the design and layout, layout of the fall newsletter. I also think that once you, once we, the layout is set, we're just putting in, I haven't seen the layout change in many years or as long as I've been getting it, we're just inserting information into those columns. And to pay that kind of money, I think it can be better used elsewhere. I don't, I, I'm not a Facebook person, so I don't know what $200 gets you for updates. But I, I, I have a hard time paying that. And I, and I'm sure it's justifiable, but I, I have a hard time paying that, that cost. Also, I asked Dog about some expenditures. It was at his pizza, Cali-Hali Resort. And then there's this reoccurring working lunch where we're buying pizza for this working lunch. The athletic director bought pizza for all his coaches, I understand. I think something like that should come from the booster club. We are saddled with student fees as taxpayers, as a, as a, as a paying parent here, parking fees, supply... Parking fees, uh, supply lists that cost money. And we are paying for pizza parties for compensated employees. I think it's wrong. There's mentality and almost seems there's a culture that this is acceptable. And when kids can't go on, um, s- for school trips because it's not in the budget and the PTOs have to pay for it or parents have to pay for it. I think it's wrong that these are going on. And I, and I asked the policy, the, um, policy committee to look into this, to come up with a policy regarding this. And I would ask the administrators to stop doing this until there's a policy on board. I also asked Doug at the last meeting about a, uh, per diem when employees are off the grounds. And he said that you thought there was one, but I can't find anything in any of the policies. I also asked the policy committee to come up with a per diem for this. Then there's, there's two charges to the village florist for fifty-eight dollars apiece, two of them, for flowers for a lady's mother, I guess. I don't know who this person is. But this is wrong. Why are we buying flowers for, I, I don't mean to be sound cold-hearted, but if we pay flowers for one person in the district, we need to, we, we fairly should supply everybody and that's not, that's not what we're here for. A card, yes. I can't even handle one char, one charge and then there's two charges for fifty-eight dollars each. Again, I, I asked the policy committee to come up with a policy regarding this. If we have this kind of discretionary income in the budget, it should go towards the kids. Or the teachers. That's my opinion.
Doug, do we have a summary of any of those, uh, pizza lunches and? I saw one in here for like forty-two dollars. Are those working lunches? Towards our, our eating or something like that?
I'd, um, I'd have to ask, um, the person whose department was charged exactly what it was for. I know there are some of those. I've observed them. But the detail, actually, all of those things that, um, he's talking about are under the educators' credit union.
Charge cards.
Charge cards.
Well, the Calahari was a conflict over that.
Yes.
Yes, that was a conflict.
I mean, at some level, you have to have, I mean, this is a business. We, our, our business is educating kids and rightfully so, all expenses, you know, should, in order to their benefit. The question remains then, though, what, are there benefits here that can be achieved? And, and obviously from an employment standpoint, having good employees and, and treating people well and doing, um, having working lunches or whatever, add to the benefit of the students and, although it's indirectly, as opposed to handing someone a check to go on a field trip. If the teachers, the teaching staff is elevated to a different level through some discretionary expenses, that's all part of the budget. When we budget, we don't budget, um, you know. As a matter of fact, you could just look at the salaries. We, we budget a range of salaries for a percentage increase. But we know that some teachers leave, some come back, some, you know, you have to rehire, so there is that range. There's a certain level of discretion that has to take place in any given business. And, you know, just because we're a municipal type entity doesn't mean that discretion shouldn't be afforded to the administrators who run the operation. If, if you saw a fall off for some reason, um, that's one thing. If, if you're talking about a fifty-eight dollar charge for some pizzas, I guess, I'm, I'm not sure my time is well-served here even just talking about that.
Oh, I totally disagree with that.
I mean, that's fine. I understand you disagree.
I couldn't disagree with that more. Because if we allow these little forty-two dollars for pizzas, fifty-eight thou, two fifty-eight dollars for flowers, what's it next? Uh, no, it's, it's, it's a culture, it's a mentality. We, as school board members, need to look out for this. This is not a private business. Tax, I, I'd love to put this in front of the taxpayers and say, "Are you okay with this?" And, and I think they'd come back and say, "No." We pay all these fees, student fees, just to, just to, just to be here, parking fees, um, the list of, of supplies that we have to give. And you're telling me it's okay to have a, a working lunch? Why can't they bring their own lunch or why couldn't they pay for their own pizza? So to tell me that's part of their, their, uh, compensation? I think it's wrong.
They don't have to be here either and they can charge for overages and the overage charges can be quite high. I mean, let's face it, this, this district is become, is one of the-
What do you mean overages?
Doug, you want to explain what an overage is? For a teacher workload, a teacher is assigned a certain workload to the extent they go over that workload, their contract is for X amount of hours, X amount of kids. If they're here extra time, they get basically overtime. That's the rule. So, took for someone to, for someone to come and have, have a lunch and maybe a piece of pizza or something, uh, and, and now we don't get charged an overage charge, that's pound why, penny wise, pound foolish.
No, I don't think so. No one's buying meat free, no one's buying meat free lunch.
This district is one of the most frugal in the state. We paid for that, uh, uh, facility across the, the place over here, uh, in cash and paid off all our bonds because we're that frugal. So the mentality here is one of frugality versus one of frivol, frivolity.
Right. I still think it's wrong. No one's buying meat free lunch. And I don't think the district should be buying people free lunch.
The point is it's not free. It's not free. There's a, there's a purpose to it. The, all I'm saying is see the purpose. But if you can't see it, that's okay.
The purpose is what? So that they can work through their lunch? Why couldn't they bring their own lunch? Or why couldn't they pay for the pizza?
Why don't they just not show up at all because they don't have to?
Well, that, that's insane to say that.
Is it really?
Yeah, yeah, it is.
Maybe we should take a look at, at, you know, maybe how much is being spent and just see if, you know, kind of look at it and say, is this a reasonable amount? Or do we, you know, I think from time to time to do a working lunch and, you know, and to provide some pizza or some snacks or sandwiches. How do I want to say? It kind of builds a morale kind of thing and I think there is some value to it. Unless, of course, we're finding that it is being excessive. And at that point, we have to sit down as a group and say, what do we think is reasonable? What do we think is excessive?
Hey, we're talking about a few dollars as compared to our budget of what's right now.
I don't mean to diminish that all bills should be looked at. That's not, that's not what I'm saying. I'm just, I'm, I'm trying to point out that sometimes what may appear to be a charge that you might not incur actually has some value to it. And sometimes that's in the mindset of those that have the discretion over those costs. Um, and if, if there, if there's an abuse, it should be quite evident and we should be able to ferret that out. Because we get these bills that, you know, a hundred pages long every month, so we can all see them.
And, uh, the two charges of flowers look a little unusual, but is there any possibility that some of that was? I know, like, for example, I saw the soccer banquet on there as a payout. Well, I know as parents, we probably paid into it, but, but the district wrote the check. So I'm wondering if, if, if by chance that was-
Clarify the rules.
Yeah.
Um, we have a policy, in this case, unfortunately, we had two staff members that had a parent's test made as part of it. And in the case of, um, year old, if it's a needed family member, if it would be a spouse, or a father in law, or a child, then we could spend flowers. If it's, um, an extended family member, if it's a mother-in-law, father-in-law, um, cousin, or girl, whatever, they're not apart. We only turn that we may do that for our, for the majority of the year.
And whose policy is that?
Um, I was just told when I started that this was the history of what this law was done. I asked, um, Joel, my predecessor, what it would be if it was. You know, these are how it's done, of course. And she said if it wasn't a needed family member, the history of what it was done. And then, and the card that we sent with that says, um, our due staff people in law, or if I, you know, put a forty percent in the social, or, or whatever.
That's part of the school climate and culture we're trying to establish. Keep it positive, make it a great place to work. And there are a lot of pressures in any job, to be sure, but you still want to, as much as possible, make it a place where people enjoy coming to work. And when you lose someone close to you, that means, it, it's incredible, the, the responses we get from people that, um, they got something from the school board and replaced the business.
Yeah, I, I would agree. Well, if, if we can differentiate ourselves, um, by doing some things. It does improve employee morale. I, I would be careful also. It doesn't get excessive, but that's what we impolent, uh, the, the administration to do. Um, I don't think it's a bad idea. We just look at maybe a trend that was over two years. You've got the, uh, you know, the account numbers or the totals for the different cost centers. You know, just do a quick little trend analysis and see what it looks like. We saw it increasing at a precipitous rate, well, we got to take a look at it. But I think you get, you'd be surprised how much return you get when you, uh, when you do something as little as flowers or, uh, a working lunch. Comes back sometimes twofold in productivity. It's been my experience at least.
I, I'd still like the po, uh, policy committee to look at this.
Could you send me an email on that, please?
Sure.
I mean, uh, Quinn?
And I know we did as well. Um, all right, so if there are no more comments on that, is there a motion to approve 3C?
So moved.
Bernie, is there a second? Okay, thank you. So all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed?
Aye.
All right, then Quinn, um, 3D.
3D. Oh, what, what do we give it? I don't, I don't know nothing about this.
The recommendation from the committee is it's a two thousand dollar annual stipend. If, if they meet the criteria of achieving a master's degree that they can show is going to directly impact what they bring into the classroom and, and positively impact the students. So it has to be something, obviously in their field, something that shows it's going to be positive. It can't be just some random master's degree, um, in order to receive the stipend. All five of those individuals that were given to the board met that criteria.
So two thousand dollars, uh, per year?
Yeah, it's an annual, um, because la, uh, when Act Ten went into place, everything was frozen. We used to do, um, increases automatic for, um, masters and credits. Right now, we're, we aren't doing anything with the, just the credits because many people will still have to get six credits to keep their certification. Um, there's things that they do above and beyond that in our, the, um, compensation plan we're trying to pull together uh, for the, for the coming years that we would recognize, um, rather than just automatically giving credits, reimbursement for credits.
And how is this fair compared to the schools around us? Do you know?
It's aligned, probably doing the same, trying to do the same alignment with, uh, employee compensation. Mostly because they're the inner race to the top. That's one of the agreements that the state of Wisconsin gave, um, the federal law.
We received, all school members, board members received the email from, uh, Ms. Margaret Temple. She's a-
We're not talking about that, Quinn.
No? Okay.
Was this budgeted? We, we, well, the person I'll recommend that I'm just curious about it.
Uh, just, we, uh, we budgeted, um, across the board, a two percent increase. And these dollars would be part of that, probably.
Seems like a positive, uh, baby step towards merit, uh, recognition in, in light of that law. Would it be inappropriate that we, for the record, name these five teachers who have, I, I think, in a great way, increased our, um, education here by achieving a higher degree? Should we name them or not?
Uh, there, there's nothing that says you can't name them and, um, it's our baby step, like you said, towards the effective teacher evaluation and compensation. We would recognize some of those things.
I don't have a list of who they are.
Yeah, I don't have the board only section. Who, who has that list?
Well, I have the board only section, but the names don't-
Uh, the names are there.
I'd have to think for, maybe we can do it next, if it's the next board meeting, would that be right? Just to recognize the five people.
Were there any that did not qualify that? Um, was there, I thought there was a larger list.
There was, there was a larger list from the union that wanted to recognize the credits. These were the only ones that were specifically master's degree related.
All the rest were specific to the master's degree?
Right, all the rest were specific to just credits only.
Okay. Anything else on, uh, 3D? And do we have a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Bernie, is there a second? No second? All even? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Very good. All right, then we'll move down to four, uh, number four, old business, 4A, discuss and take possible action, um, the district goals and measurements.
And I, I know how much you like, um, Eric's presentations, so I have him coming up and he actually pulled it together for the, um, admin team because each person has a piece of it. Um, so he just put the slides together and I'll let each administrator or representative, uh, talk on their particular goals. If you, um, Nancy asked us to send you a list of board goals again so that you got it, but these come right underneath, remember this sheet that looks like this. Those would be the, uh, the measurable goals. So, high school.
At the high school, um, we're continuing to work on increasing our composite score for the ACT. Um, when Tony joined us, um, we started heading on that journey. So, um, just to give you a little bit of background, prior to Tony being here in two thousand seven, our composite score was a twenty-two point six. Um, in two thousand twelve, uh, we were at a twenty-three point four. So, um, our goal is to hopefully reach that twenty-four by the end of the two thou, two thousand thirteen, fourteen school year. Um, some of the things that we did, and, uh, we give a lot of credit to Tony for getting most of the things started, but, um, the professional learning community is that the teachers are working in and really makes a difference, um, in there. That's where they put together their common curriculum and they look at, you know, increasing the rigor. We've added a lot of courses that increase rigor from these guys' pay, which obviously helps them to earn a higher score in the ACT. Um, the teachers are familiar with the benchmarks that are part of it. Um, we offer the kids testing beginning of eighth grade that looks at the ACT. They take the explore eighth and ninth grade, then they take the plan, they take the practice ACT. Um, in terms of common assessments, the teachers are involved in developing a common assessment. The really focus of that is so that if you have four teachers who are teaching the same course, the kids have the same experience regardless of who they have as a teacher. Everyone is shooting for that same outcome in the assessment. What they do in the classroom might look different because that's the teacher's opportunity to personalize it, but their end goal is the same. Um, and that kind of cuts down on, you know, differences in, I want to be in this teacher's class. Everyone is focused on the same, same thing. So it also gives teachers an opportunity during their, um, professional learning community time to look at data and compare. And then they can take notes and they can say, "Well, your kids did better on this section than my students. What did you do differently?" And then they can adjust their, their teaching and their, um, curriculum from there. So that's for, uh, high school.
To Jackie?
Yes.
I was doing some, like, I read something, I was speaking to, I don't know if it was the governor, the school superintendent, who wanted to propose um, s, a hundred percent testing of some additional tests. Or was it Pioneer Test or, I can't remember what it was. Maybe it was at the middle school level. But I thought it was at the high school level, in addition to the ACT that they wanted to have an initiative for.
The state's proposal at the high school was do you explore a ninth grade, plan at tenth grade? Everyone would take ACT in school for real as their, as juniors and then they had, um, work keys, which is another, it's an ACT assessment that's geared for, um, college and career readiness. So that's the suite there.
And that's just a proposal. I don't, there's not been nothing formalized on that. So what was the last thing you were speaking about, the career readiness?
The work keys is, it's an additional assessment. So it's more like application-based type questions. So as seniors, they would have the option of taking that or they would take that assessment as part of the ACT suite.
If I may, part of that works into something called national career readiness certification. And work keys is a major element of that. What that does is, if you have employers who have bought into it, and I don't mean money-wise and conceptually. Concept is that a student can take the scores from their test and it comes on several different levels. Where the employer is part of the job, seeking time. And it, what it does is it says they've got a capacity to do certain things at certain levels. An employer then can look at that right away as opposed to having to go through the whole interview process. And it should allow a student to come in and say, here's where I am and rise in the pile rankings when the player comes to look at resumes.
Do we administer those tests now, the work keys tests?
I don't believe we do. It's something that's, that through federal programs that are going on right now, it's being pushed pretty hard. Illinois just adopted it and several other states are doing it also. It's just something whose time has started. Clock's ticking on it. It's time to be done.
Does anyone else have anything for Jackie? I have one, but actually two things. So 100% of the staff and then that's by when? Will they have developed and analyzed their common assessments?
Well, by, by the end of last year, we had common assessments at the end of, we had two per quarter. So now the teachers are looking at their entire unit's unit common assessments. I'd have to go back and look at our chart. I think we're at the same point with the 2013, 14.
Nancy, are you saying you'd like to see a date on each one?
Yeah.
Yeah. So we can, we'll add that.
Which then actually brings me to my next question. If these are 2012, 13 goals, then why do we have a goal for 2013 and 14? And what did you say the average was right now?
We're at a 23.4.
23.4.
Because if you, this is something that takes time, you know, I mean, that's, it's, the increase that we've had is pretty incredible, so it's not, I mean, it's not something that's going to happen overnight. And the work that the teachers are doing and now impacting, you know, the Common Core and looking at all those targets all lead into that. It's going to take a while to get there.
So could you say then that your goal for 2012, 13 is to increase to 23.7?
I think we've always had, we started off at five years, not even our original plan. So it's always quite a range in there.
The magic number of 24 is because for college and career readiness in science, which is the highest market, it's 24. So if you can have a composite of 24, then you're basically increasing everyone who's college and career ready all the way across the board. Statistically, ACT says that if you make a conscious effort to actually focus on ACT, you can expect at max a .2 gain each year. We've already gone up almost two full, we have four points in the amount of time that we should have gone up .6. So, I mean, we've experienced more gains than we probably should have. And a lot of it too comes back to, we'll probably see a significant gain next year with the board's approval of the new science sequence. That group of students will actually be the first group next year to take the ACT. So that's what I'm sorry, paying off in the long run, looking at the science. So the long range goal is one of those, okay, five years out, you're on, you know, what's kind of our dream?
Worked this year in, at the elementary level with reading and math. We're sure there's some weaknesses that we're doing specifically with third quarter. Spelling and spelling board. With math, we are working with, math because, and they're still doing it in math, but we've been up so many assessments. We're doing Common Core and Pappy this year at the elementary level with the support of Tony and the curriculum department. So there's a lot of initiatives in this area, reading and math, that we're doing. But we felt we could have a measurable goal by using our math aspect of something that we said we want.
And math is a measure of academic progress. It's a National Norm test where a high billion children take it in all of DC. It's given, it's available from kindergarten through the eighth grade. Well, actually, they're giving high school pieces to it, but the pieces that we looked at, originally last year, we began with our K-5 students taking it. And in our first and second grade, there's an aspect to math called math, math reprimandary grades. And it's, it assists the child because it's auditorily supported. It reads to the child, both in math and in reading. And this year, we made some changes to having a bunch of the experience with math and math reprimandary grades from last year. First of all, we upgraded to the Common Core aligned edition this year. So looking at last year's numbers for this year's numbers are going to become a challenge because they're not the same test. We also learned that kindergartners taking the personalized assessment tests and challenges. This year, however, the state of Wisconsin requires for all boys and girls in kindergarten a test, a phonological awareness test, CALES, which is both individually given and there's some components for it which are small groups. And we're giving, we're required to this, three and close, beginning and end, but we're also giving it mid-year as well. We're using that as our screener for boys and girls in K-5. The business side, we are exploring purchasing of our Q4 to the standardized piece. So we're not giving the math reprimandary grades for kindergarten this year. We will at the end of the year give it just for the theory of math only. First grade is not considered into this goal because, again, they're using a different form of a test. So you'll see up on the screen that we're expecting an increase in RIT scores. You might be thinking, what's that? The R stands for, the gentleman who created this particular form of measurement, I think it was Rush there, Rush. But interestingly enough, NWA, the company calls it Ready for Instruction Today. And that's really the great thing about the score. When it comes up, we know where boys and girls are today, this moment in time. And having this type of very powerful screener throughout the elementary level gives us real time as opposed to WPSC that we do in November, ship it away and find out in March. We have real-time data. As soon as the boys and girls are finished at the computer, their score pops up. We know where they are and the norm data, and it helps give us the support of two benchmark assessments that we might be giving one-on-one for reading or for those everyday math tasks. So it's a second piece of data.
It's an achievement measure that regardless of grade level, it means the same thing. So it allows us to measure growth over time. And at every level, the goal that we're giving you in the end of the year. That's why we're using this as our goal. Well, I had a survey in the free. We took a look at last year's data. And we're basically saying, you know, this is a different version, but it's more rigorous. We had one year we did a look at to say, what type of book do we perceive that we could use within the year? And we're kind of taking a little bit of a toll because, because of the news happening. So we're giving it a shot, hoping that we can get, this is the minimum. We're hoping actually that we achieve a higher level than this. And the Whittaker students already from the first assessment that we took in September are achieving about the National Norm. So what you're already at about the National Norm statistically is that they're harder to make. That's a goal for the year. If any questions, if you have.
Okay, communication was mostly something that Eric and I worked on. And the first one was that establish the annual community survey on relevant and timely topics. Actually, that's from our strategic planning subcommittee. Do you want to just say a thing or two about that? You or Lynn, Chris?
Yeah, we met with, we met with Bill Foster from-
School perception.
And we've had one preliminary meeting. We have a meeting scheduled for this week. And we're looking at the data, basically, that we could receive from the last community survey to be a guide for the survey that we're going to be doing this year with an increased focus on some of our achievements and outlining some of the achievements that the district has undertaken over the, over the last few years. So it's part informational, part gaining information with a, with an emphasis on communication. Specific emphasis on communication.
Okay. The second part, providing infinite campus messenger training to needed staff. I think that's one that Eric really likes because, like this past weekend, I don't know what he's doing at seven o'clock on a Saturday night, but I sent him-
Sending messages for Dr. Holt.
I sent him the email. I wanted to go out to all the parents. And he's fantastic in that he literally drops what he's doing and he gets it done. But I also understand the need that one of these days I'll wake up and know that we have to close school because of snow or something and not be able to get a hold of Eric. Not be able, I know Tony had been trained, most of our principals have. So the one by December of 2012, I think he's talking about me specifically on that one. And the rest by January 2013. Did you want to add anything to that, Eric?
Not really. It's just we have those key personnel in the district, you know, this isn't open or available to anybody. It's primarily administrative staff that they can reach out in times of need, even in non-emergency. Just, you know, those big reminders of, hey, we have this huge event coming at our building, you know, in two days kind of thing. That they can use this system then to reach out to our families, you know, here at-
You can send these alerts out off-campus?
No, it's only our, I guess you'd call our campus families, I mean, people that have students here.
I mean, but you can do it physically at home or-
I was sitting in a recliner on Saturday night, asleep when the text came through from Dr. Holt. Please send this out immediately. And it was out shortly thereafter. So, yes, any, we can do it anywhere we get internet access in the world.
So then whoever's trained would have that capability?
Right. Plus, there's also an emergency component to it, in the case of like a snow emergency type thing, where we can hit everybody's device all at once. So it's not just email, or it's not just voice. It's going to hit cell phones. It's going to hit their voicemail. It's going to hit their home phones. If they put their work phones into the system, this is up to the individual families to do. It will blast all those at once. Now that, we keep very contained to a select group of staff that have access to that.
One thing we didn't put on here is the community collaboration committee that we're forming in our community. But it's because it's more of a long-range goal. Luanne Bird, who many of you have met before, has a lot of experience with family community and collaboration. And it's not just the school, it's the entire community. It includes the city government, I mean, everybody. And so that's, and we're trying to put the SMART goals in place for that. But one of the things that's always, and the two key tools are community surveys, although those are not regular feedback type items. You only have it once or twice, you know, every year. And then the other thing was a community feedback form on the district website. So if you come in to drop off your kid's lunch and you want to fill out the customer service form, you're welcome to do that. It gives us a, kind of a, kind of like when you go to a hotel and they say, how'd we do? It helps you see what's going on so you're not surprised later and go, wow, we didn't know we were doing that. And you're giving that impression. So again, I worked with Eric, the form, we talked about it, and when you read the minutes on the admin team agenda, we talked about it at a couple of admin teams and design should be finished by January of 2013 and should be up on the website by February 2013.
Essentially, it's a feature of our new website that we have not turned on yet. So we just need to design it. What questions do we want to appear on there? Turn it on and it's available right through the main page.
Eric, did you have a question? I just have to say that I was talking to a mom from Hills Corners Elementary and she commented about how great the communication is. She really credited Lori and, and I'm sure Eric for sending out all this information. So she did, I mean, she really went out of her way to say how great the communication is this year.
And speaking of that, I don't know if you've received it or not, but a parent sent a, to the link on the webpage, an email saying how great the concert was and Shannon, the teacher. And that would be something that they could just put on that and say, yeah, it was a really neat program. Now, who would be fiscal responsibility?
I'm trying to get somebody else to do this. Actually, I have to give some credit to Lori and to Matt, who's not here because we sort of work together, but I'm the one who gets to present this as, it's okay if I do it from here. Our goal for fiscal responsibility, financial control and discipline. The first two on there actually go pretty much together. And one would say, that's a no-brainer. Those are things that you should be doing anyway. But because of things like our declining enrollment, the fact that we used a lot of our fund balance to do the defeasance of our debt last fall, or the fact that we, or last spring, the fact that we levied less than the maximum allowed under the law and we continue to see and will continue to see under the current formula a loss of 15% of our state aid every year. I think it is forcing us to put much more emphasis on making sure that we're budgeting appropriately and that we're living within that budget. Developing the three-year capital improvement plan, we sort of kicked that off during the last month with a couple of walking tours of the buildings to show the board members what some of the issues are. We felt it's one thing when you see it on paper, but it's something else when you get to actually see it in person. We were advised that by the finance committee that we, the administration, should come back to the board with a list of all of the district projects with our priorities assigned to them rather than asking the board to assign priorities. Last, I probably could have stated this a little more clearly, but what I mean by work with the board to evaluate purchase services, we've got a board policy that talks about competitively bidding a variety of different services. And some of those are overdue for that. The policy does give the board the ability to not go out for bids. But for example, you've already directed me to prepare an RFP for insurance consulting services. I recently got word from the United States Department of Agriculture that we're going to be required to do an RFP for our food service management this year. Under normal circumstances, we wouldn't be up for that supposedly for another year. But because of some of the changes in nutritional requirements, they're requiring all districts that have a management company to put on an RFP, whether it's the first year or the last year of their existing contract. So we'll have to be doing that. And I'm planning to put together a list, just off the top of my head, things like the audit services, legal services, things like that, that I would like to get some direction from the board about so that if you want those services bid, that we can do that during this next semester. Any questions?
The three-year capital improvement plan, rough timeframe on when we might see something on that?
We, let's see, Matt and I met on that Friday. We're going to put something together and I don't know if there's a next finance committee meeting actually scheduled. We were hoping to present it to the finance committee at that time.
Did you want us to put dates on those bullet points as well? So like work with the board to evaluate the variety and then so, which the district employs by June 2013, something like that?
All right, go for it. Is mobile tab-
All right, go for it. Is mobile tablet technology and putting that into the hands of our students to support academic achievement in classrooms, some of our measurable, attainable goals there. We have to provide professional development first. Teachers don't know what's going on, obviously the students aren't going to. So we survey the staff, find out what do they need in terms of skills. Once we can know what they need, then we go establish related professional development opportunities, create the opportunities, customize them to the skills that our teachers need, create that schedule, and then obviously execute those trains. Create, to teacher-develop lesson plan and mobile app database. This was kind of a brainchild. Tony came into me one morning with a crazy idea, I want to say early October, and then I, after I thought about it for a while, I'm like, yeah, we can actually do that. And this is going to turn into a huge project that will, is up, well, actually well underway, but will extend into several years for us. Get all the infrastructure in there. What is this? We're going to create this database of all this information, but it's going to be reviewed from within our district. It's going to be for our staff and our teachers to use. So we talk about going with mobile tablets. There's so much out there on the internet, and a lot of the information is junk. So we are going to review it, have our teachers entered into a searchable database within our district. And so if I am a new third grade teacher, and I need to know how can I use these tablets in my classroom, I can go to this database. Okay, when you have technology, it's always going to fail you too. Ah, I love it, right in the middle of my spiel. But that, any teacher can search this, and if they are, say, need some help for science at the third grade level, they can look up science, and they can look up third grade, and they can look up Common Core, and they are going to get the Common Core third grade science standards with a list of district-reviewed applications that work on our new technology that will aid them in the classroom. So any subject, any grade, all peer-reviewed within our district. We need to beta-test that system with a pilot group of teachers, it's a huge initiative to do this. And then once they have said, all right, this is the way we need it to look, these are the features we need. All right, tech guys, you've made this happen, then we go and train all the staff on how to use that database. Initiate review of digital textbooks. This is where we're going in our country. From the federal government on down, they've said, this is what we're going to do. Problem is, there's no set system out there yet. There's no good way to do it, it's evolving. But between myself and the library media services director, we need to review digital textbook systems that are out there, and then come to the tech committee by the end of the year with potential candidate systems that will work here at Whitman. Any questions?
And all this is obtainable in the year?
All of it's actually well underway and probably 80% done.
So same comment, any dates?
Throw them out there for you. Like I said, it's almost all done already. We're already in the middle of our professional development cycle. We've had hours and hours of training already. Survey was done long ago. You know, these have been out here for a couple of months already, so there's more of, we'll have to talk.
And to your comment on the dates, Eric and I will just sit down, go through all and put by on that.
For middle school, as you probably remember, our big initiative this year is kicking off positive behavior intervention supports and study systems. You know, research tells us that when you have behavior in check in a school, that, you know, it goes hand-in-hand with academics. So we've really kicked it off, it's been fabulous so far. And we are seeing results. I, I don't have any hard numbers, but I can tell you just anecdotally, I see a lot less kids in the office for major infractions. So we actually have two parts of our goal. The first part isn't on here, that we would reduce our major office referrals for major infractions, things like fighting and, you know, the big things, not just chewing gum. By a minimum of 10%. I think we've easily exceeded that, and, you know, I think we'll be very pleased with our results. But the other half is that, at the end of the year, you know, we're at tier one. If you think of response to intervention, the pyramid of interventions we've talked about over the last couple of years, the universal intervention, the tier is tier one, that's where we're at right now, getting all on board, how we're working with kids, talking to kids, our expectations for kids. By the end of this year, after implementing tier one, we hope to have at least 85% of our students indicating that they feel physically and emotionally safe in our school. By climate's a reduction, we'll administer at the end of the year. And then, that's not part of my goal. So that's, that's what we've been working on, I've talked about it before, and we'll be back with results at the end of the year that I, I think we'll be really pleased with.
Are you going to add that one, where the reduction of 10%?
Yes. I, I, I'm thinking maybe Eric didn't know if I wanted it on there and I was out sick Friday, so, and I didn't communicate, I saw he knew that he needed it by noon on Friday this morning, so it's all good. But yes, it's on there.
Anything else, Lynn?
Well, just a comment. In talking to some of the middle school students, they've found, they've been, some of them have actually been shocked a little bit. They've been pleasantly surprised to be caught at something good.
Yes.
And that, that's kind of a nice thing to hear from that age group, that, that they're not being called on the carpet all the time, and it's always negative.
And that is one component of the PBIS, is that we acknowledge those positive things that they're doing. And we are doing those, and we're, we're giving, you know, we, we have little awards for the kids that, we, every Friday we pull, they get blue slips for positive behavior. We pull blue slips, and we have, you know, small prizes that we give to the kids. We also do kids who are using their assignment notebook, which is part of being, you know, our, our three tenants are be respectful, responsible and safe. Well, if you're being responsible, you're using that assignment notebook, getting your homework on time. So we'll, at random, call kids down, you know, come to the office with your assignment notebook, and we'll, are you using it? And if they're using it, they get their reward. If not, well, try again, you know. So the kids are being recognized for doing the right thing. And often, you know, those good kids that just do the right thing every day because it's what they do, they don't get that recognition, and now they are, and, and it's reinforcing it. And, you know, some, you know, we worried about them doing it for the prize, well, that may be some of it, but there's still, you know, what we do becomes habit, and they're still engaging in those behaviors that are positive, so.
And the other thing that I noticed with the student body in general, if I've gone into the building, that there are students that will hold open the door for me, whether it's the inside or the outside or the stair corridors, and I find that might seem insignificant, but I also noticed that over at the high school as well, that there's just a general culture of a little bit baseline of courtesy towards people, which is nice to see, and that it's encouraging, it's a great start.
The last one is the school climate survey. We'll talk to the people at RASA, the Association of Wisconsin School Administrators, and look at some of their school climate surveys as an admin team, and then we'll choose the one that we would administer. And in the spring of 2013, we'll administer the survey, and then see if there's a, besides developing our own baseline, if there's a, any state or national standards you can compare it to. And that's not all on there, it's on the original school district goal sheet. And those, those dates will be by June of 2013. And that's the five.
Anyone have any more comments, questions?
Lynn, why weren't your goals in with the first goal?
Um, well, you know, I, I really think that this could be considered an academic goal. I think we will see academic improvement. We're always working on improving academics. It's, you know, math and language arts is always our, our focus. This is just our major focus for the year. But it doesn't mean that anything's going, being put aside for PBIS. You know, the teachers are working very hard at making sure, you know, realigning our curriculum to the Common Core. We've implemented in our targeted teaching, that teachers are pulling kids for small group instruction. We've kind of fine-tuned it from what we've done in the years past, where we structured our, our master schedule so that when sixth grade students have targeted teaching, the eighth grade students are avail, or eighth grade teachers are available to take larger groups of sixth grade kids to basically have a study hall, so that teachers can meet with small groups of kids and really focus on, you know, supporting them and beefing up their skills if they're, if they're struggling. So, you know, Mike's here, he can attest to, they're working hard, and, you know, I'm doing my best to keep them all sane and, and feeling appreciative, because they are really, really working hard. And I think we'll see some results in our test scores, our math scores, because of it.
And I guess this would go to all of you, with the collaborative, collaborative release time in our professional learning communities. Are we going to see an uptick in scores because of that?
I think it's what, it's the work that's being done within the collaborative release time, and what does support us is the, the ability to have some vertical teaming, which is not something that we have had for an extended period of time in overtime. So I definitely think that will happen. When you align, for instance, we're spending a lot of time right now just investigating the Common Core and looking, looking at gap analysis, where are we strong, what areas are we missing. So that's a step one, but then there's multiple steps after that. Now, when you achieve all of that, I think you're going to see a gain, but I don't think that's something that specifically you can attach it to CR overnight.
And Tony sent out pictures today, and appreciate that, and I, I get it that you can't get everything on pictures. But the one thing I didn't see, can't be pictured possibly, is working, one of the selling points of the collaborative, collaborative release time, or professional learning communities, was that we would be able to help underachieving and overachieving kids ASAP. Do we see that happening?
I, I can say confidently, absolutely at the middle school.
Part of one of the, part of something that we're also doing at the elementary schools of, our block schedule is a dedicated targeted teach time. And so during collaborative release, it gives the teachers an opportunity to talk about the classroom data, what is it showing, how they're going to reconfigure the group of students at that grade level, possibly even interchanging them. Very, we had data meetings around that, specifically around reading, but the teachers pull those then on an ongoing basis as they need to, as they're finishing, for instance, my fifth grade group, that's, fifth grade group teachers that's doing it around math, as the assessments are finished, they're looking where the gaps are, and, or as they're doing some of the, or as they, some of the tests along the way, just to see where kids are at. They're assess, they're looking at those assessments and then making those adjustments, so that kids are, are getting that just-in-time assistance.
And have we found that, when we go from elementary to middle and middle to high school, have we found that, because we're going to collaborate with those elements, have we found anywhere that we're, we're missing or we're, we're not getting these kids prepared for the next level? Has there come up in any of the, in any of the collaborative time?
You know, I think we're, right now, I don't know if Tony has shared with you the spreadsheet he put together of all the Common Core standards for each grade level, but it's a, it's a huge document. And, you know, an hour and a half to really get at it twice a month is, you know, we're just scratching the surface for our, our buildings. And, you know, our goal through, through the four buildings is by the end of the year, we will have unpacked all those, looked at all those and said, you know, okay, you know, for middle school math, this is what needs to be taught in sixth grade, this is what's in seventh, this is what's in eighth, and, gosh, we're doing this in eighth, we got to take it all the way down to sixth, and kind of getting our house in order, and then we can start working both, you know, with the high school and the elementaries to say, okay, we know where we're supposed to be, here's some of our sixth grade stuff that your fifth grade needs to do. And so, so it, it, you know, it's time-intensive work. It, it's not something that can be done in three hours. It, it is going to take a school year. Because they are doing it right, they're really looking at what they're teaching, and what does this mean to us, you know, this skill, what does it mean to us at the middle school? And, you know, what are we doing? And it may be a science piece could actually be taught in, you know, tech ed or something. So it's, when getting all those people together and discussing it, it takes time.
And what is happening is that we have teachers, for instance, in Lori's building and mine, they are collaborating at the level, not only during the collaborative release times, but often, I mean, she'll have teams of teachers coming over and they're working on a Monday night, just to kind of get going and get, you know, get, they see how much needs to be done and the amount of time to do it. So they're not only working within the collaborative release, but they're working outside this, and during some of their common collaborative time within the school day as well. But it's going to take, it will take all year for the, to be completed.
Lynn even has teachers asking for access over the weekend to get in the building.
Yeah.
Because Matt was telling me, is it okay if we give them codes?
I, I have to say, you know, my staff is really, really working hard. I mean, I, I threw the intervention piece on them this year and took away planning time for them, so they have less planning time than they, they're accustomed to. And then they're doing Common Core, and then PBIS. I mean, they're exhausted, and they're working so hard and doing so many great things for kids. You know, you can be assured, there's nobody sitting with their feet up at the middle school.
That's, and that's one of the reasons that the-
I wasn't, I wasn't picking off you in particular.
No, I don't.
No, I, I was impressed by what's going on with their staff, through, and every staff. But one of the reasons we really wanted to have that data workshop with the board on the seventh is because it's so complex, and we want you to have a basic understanding of the type of stuff that they're doing in those collaborative release meetings, and what kinds of things that, I mean, you know, what's Tony spending his day on and his week and, you know, so you can get a grasp of it. And I think that'll be very helpful.
I take it this is the big sheet?
Yeah, and what teachers got, all teachers got was this filled in, and that's just second grade. So if you look across the bottom, you can see the first, kindergarten is in first grade, and you go all the way across, all the way through 12th grade. But if you look, this is just English Language Arts, and this is just second grade. So every second grade teacher is going through every single one of these standards for English Language Arts, and saying, is it assessed in our grade? Where is it assessed? What does the standard mean to me? And then how do we best assess it?
As we stand right now.
Is that?
Yeah.
And then, so what they, so what they're doing is, okay, if it's not there, then it's an NA, and actually the second grade team who are overachiever. Highlight them in yellow, so that later on, and once they get them all filled in, then they, then the idea is, okay, so second grade's going to talk to first grade and third grade and find out, is this NA because it's covered somewhere else? Or is this NA because we're just calling it something else? And how do we fill that gap? And then after that, then we can start building actual curriculum. But like, whoever said, again, everyone was chiming, the teachers are, I mean, you can't summarize it all here. There's so many things that are going on, like you said, the pictures, we really can't. I mean, the data meetings that Lori talked about and Chris, just to pat them on the back, because they should be, the, the data meetings their teachers have, there are other CNI directors and other districts that I've shown that to, and other principals who are jealous of the way that they handle their data. So I mean, it's, there's a lot of outstanding work going on, and it is database, so.
Great. Thank you.
So this is, is under discuss and take possible action for the district goal, so I don't know if we're ready to take action on these, or if you want them to come back with revisions?
I'd like to see them come back with revisions on the dates.
Okay.
And the other items we talked about.
All right. I would agree with that. Anybody agree with that? Okay. So if you can get those, if you can get the dates-
I don't, I understand the dates. Was there something else you were supposed to add? I missed it.
Well, some of Lynn's things are missing on hers.
Oh, okay, all right.
So if you could get, make sure we have one complete document and get it updated with the dates, and then we'll approve it at the next, the next meeting.
Awesome. Great.
All right, and then we have four B, discuss and take possible action on superintendent goals.
And I didn't put this on an overhead or anything like that. These are the goals that we shared, oh, I want to go back here. When we did our goal-setting workshop in September, sent them out again on the 28th, and then received some feedback, and then tried to write them as SMART goals. So the first one really didn't change, continuing to provide team-building training opportunities, opportunities for the admin team and the school board. And I, I know you guys can all read, but this is for the public, the tape as well. Provide collaboration opportunities through weekly administrative meetings, and you guys receive copies of that, which is letter B. Letter C, we'll do that administrative team survey in February and June to continually, continue to analyze team strengths, collaboration strengths, strengths and weaknesses. And then last, I thought this would be a good thing when we, after the elections, hire consultants familiar with board governance and team building to facilitate a board workshop. hire consultants familiar with board governance and team building to facilitate a board workshop and later than Monday, May 20th, 2013. The topics to be covered at the meeting will include board governance, team building, role and responsibilities of board and administration to ensure student success. Number two, ensuring implementation of district goals. The first one is having that board data workshop in January to establish a baseline understanding of the data interpretation analysis and then providing an update on district goal process, progress in the third and fourth quarter. So it's okay to, I mean, great to have a goal, but let's have it on what we record on. And one will be in the third quarter and one will be in the fourth quarter. The next one is probably one of those that scares me the most because it's so comprehensive. Matter of fact, Scott was part of this team that was working on the salary schedule options for all staff. The gentleman that spoke earlier was a, is he seventh grade team?
Yeah.
Part of the seventh grade team. So we, we're trying to utilize an inclusive team approach to develop a salary schedule proposal which can be shared with the school board by June 24th, 2013. And, you know, that would address some of the issues brought up in, in email I heard that you guys received, where there is, there's a long list of things that teachers do that go above and beyond. That's what you're compensated for rather than the traditional, just earning credits, whatever they were for, okay? And then the, number four was the initial addendums to the school district handbook. There are some small things that we have to do, a small addendum for the custodial staff, support staff and non-certified staff. The problem with doing this is you're always, you're with the, everything is so new, you're basically creating the wheel. There's not a template in place that you can just pull from. So we'll be, that's the goal by June 24th of 2013 because it should be done. And then the last is, besides doing all these paper and pencil things, if I don't put it down as a goal, I have a hard time getting out of my office and into the building. So because I put it on as a goal, I've been able to be many more times already this year at the different elementary schools, going to the different concerts. Haven't been to a winter sport yet, but I'm hoping to do that to kind of double up tomorrow on the concert and the, in a sporting event. And then we have attended some of the parent presentations and meetings. The last one was on the ICA curriculum, which is outstanding. And Eric did a good job on that one as well. So those are the, and they're all to be completed unless there was a different date by the end of June 2013.
Any comments, Tony?
And one, one D, the hiring of the consultant. I get concern from consultants. So if you could maybe add verbiage as it's hire a consultant prior approved by the board and familiar with board governance and team building to consult at a board workshop.
Is it okay if I just go through one of the committees, like the personnel committee or something? Or like finance committee?
Probably suggest both.
Uh, it has.
There's just, like, the public policy forum has good ones and has bad ones.
Oh, I have someone in mind already, I just haven't asked her.
As long as we get a, look at the credentials and the bio and the cost.
And the cost should be minimal.
Actually, my thought on one D was, I know when Quinn and I came on last spring, we did attend some WASB events and some of that, some of these topics are covered in those events as well. So depending on, you know, depending on costs.
Well, they have breakout, breakout sessions for board members, yeah, but this is.
And this would help with, with our board with teams, but some of the general thing is covered.
Yeah, absolutely, I agree with both of you. I'd be more than happy to share that information.
Anything else? Are you ready to approve these?
Make a motion to approve superintendent goals, yes, data for 2012, for the school year.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any other discussion? And all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right. So those are approval. And then five, comments from the school board regarding agenda items for future consideration? Number six, board member announcements?
Yes, in the Greenfield Patch, there has been a, a contest going on, Deck the House. And it's a national contest. The winner of it would get their school district $100,000. And I believe you got this email also, Dr. Holtz, from David Cody. And we possibly have two houses that made the national, made the top 25, I believe it is, top 24. He's 95% sure. One is the Ackerman home. And the other one, which I thought would have been the Stokowski home, but it's not. It's a different house that I don't know of. And I got to find it just because I want to go see it. But there is a website that we can vote and keep voting. I suppose if you just go to Greenfield Patch, you'll get there. But I'm sure, we're, we're a small district, but I'm sure it's a long shot, but if we could get a hundred thousand G's coming our way, we could have held a lot of brezza parties. It would be good. It would be good. So look forward in the patch, go online and, my God, we, I mean, this is such a small.
It's a good training session for Dr. Holtz for the Infinite Campus message.
There you go. I agree. That is, that is, and, and Facebook, I mean, this should be out there. I mean, why wouldn't we try? I mean, they're going to give it to somebody. We got, we got two in the top 24. I mean, we should get this out and I'm sure Dan Cody's loving this right now. But we, we need to get this out and, and try and promote it, who knows?
Is there an age requirement for voting?
Pardon?
Is there an age requirement for voting?
I don't believe so because my wife got on my daughter's Facebook to tell all her friends to vote for Lana Stokowski's house and, and so I don't think so.
So can you vote as many times as you want per day or once per day?
I think, once per day.
Once per day, per email address? For people with multiple email addresses.
I would assume, but I'm sure there, but if we could do this.
And Quinn also, I'm sure is aware, but Don Schwartz and Cheryl Baker have, I mean, they contacted me last week and asked if, well, I would do it on Infinite Campus. I said I'd rather save that for more emergency type items. But Don has an incredible database from working with the Friends of the Pool and Cheryl, I mean, taking the impetus to get things rolling. So compliments and for those, both of those people as well. And then we'll have to see if I get special to put that out on.
For a hundred thousand dollars, probably.
That's in the press.
I've had the sixth graders working on it because I have Hunter Stokowski in one of my classes.
There you go.
I think it was on the Hills Corners Elementary Facebook page. I saw it somewhere.
Oh, yeah, we can put it on there.
Some Facebook friend had it up there. It's getting around.
Good.
So it doesn't have to be just somebody from this area either? It can be, I mean, people all over the country.
And, and the video of the actual display is on the website and people review them and then they click who they think is the best or, yeah.
Any other announcements? Well, I just want to take this time to say this is our last meeting of 2012 and to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a happy and safe New Year. And thank you for sharing your time with us tonight. And we have a motion to adjourn.
Back to adjourn. Second.
And all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right.